Thank you all for joining us. Welcome to the March 2023 Mountain Dew Borough Meeting. As we always do, we will start with anyone wishing to address council. There are several of you out there, so who wants to go first?
I will go first. Carolyn Strup dropped this off for kind of a thank you for the MJ2KB, for the Trail of the Year presentation, so she wanted to give that to Barb.
She did say she wanted that in red.
Oh, she wanted it. Sorry.
Either you can read it or I can read it. Somebody got to read it.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I don't want to read. There we go.
Because you're projecting.
Oh, they're pictures. Okay. Thanks. Thanks. A big thank you to the Mountain Dew at Borough Council for helping to make our event with Congressman D.T. Thompson a success. MJ2KB Trail Club appreciates all the support you and Mayor Brianna and Howard have given our club and the rail trail. Carolyn Strup. That's very kind.
That's very kind. It was a successful event. We had a wonderful turnout both at the Trailhead and back here at the Borough Building. Barb did an incredible job setting up this room to accommodate all those people, so thank you Barb for that.
Yes.
And for helping to celebrate this achievement for our community.
All right, so Hilltop Heritage has a couple things to address. In 2022, we had six events for Music on Six occur with that. Each event that we had donations given to us, we would like to present a check for $543.10 from those six events that we would like to give to the borough. But I would like some sort of picture so we can show that we gave that Maryland's ear.
Can we do it at the end?
We can do that at the end. But yeah, so we're excited because we have been given from our art committee that we will be doing a 2023 Music on Six as well, and we do hope that this money helps with that project for the amphitheater. The playground, we do have the $5,000, and that does need to, that was given to us from the McKean County Community Foundation, so Marilyn is here to talk about what we talked about. You don't have to.
Well, I had to do an narrative on February 15th of what we were going to be doing with the money. I wasn't in contact with Ms. Eddy, and I told her that we were planning on using some of that to maybe put in a new swing set, a couple of benches. She said that is fine, but the money does have to be used by the end of the year.
And we do know there's a committee starting and stuff. We just think that would be awesome if, you know, if not for the baseball season, but maybe by Swedish Festival, and that would definitely spend that money by the end of this year, so we're hoping for more updates from the community. In addition, we have been in talks with the Wolf Run, Wolf Creek Run management for a marathon that will be occurring during Swedish Festival on Sunday. They dedicated the Hilltop Heritage as a designated.
Not just Sunday? You said on Sunday.
Swedish Festival.
On Sunday, Swedish Festival. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
But as designated and all the extra money that they receive, I think it's over and above $1,000 dollars profit, we receive that money as earmarked for more benches for the town. We do not know how much that's going to be. It really depends on the different options that they have available and how successful they are, but they will have, I can't really get 10K, a two-mile walk.
Two-mile walk. It's a 10K, 5K, two-mile walk, and a one-mile run.
Yeah.
I think that's what it is.
So there's lots of options, and each of those will have obviously people that pay to run, and it's a really big deal, so we're excited about that. But we will be designated the money for that, so we're excited to have that, and then we'll be talking with the borough again about where do these benches go and address that. It's not our sidewalks right here for the most part, so that is.
Is that the same race that Linda Meyer took on?
Yes, yes.
And they're hoping to bring back the Swanson name. I know the Bob Swanson name was a big deal with one of their.
Yeah, they want to try to bring that back, the name.
So that's a goal. We also are set for May 20th, the Spring Fling. So this will be our third annual Spring Fling with the yard sales and the food vendors. Right now we're at four food vendors, three craft vendors, and then two yard sales so far, and applications have only been out for about two weeks. We're hoping for good weather for that, and we'll be at the fire hall, so be aware or sign up to attend or not attend, but participate. Through the library.
What day is the fall hall or the spring fling?
May 20th, Saturday. On library news.
About that, I don't know if Brett or Barb knows, is there a chance that the fire hall will again be filled with construction equipment at that time? Do we know?
There's a possibility, but all they have to do is the actual ramp to the fire hall in this small section of the sidewalk. So I assume as soon as we get good weather, they should be knocking this out. It shouldn't take much time at all. All the conduits in, it should literally be a week.
Perfect.
So they can almost stage what they have here and fill a lot.
Perfect. Thank you.
On behalf of the library, we will have a music bingo on April 7th. It's a Friday. We know it is Good Friday. Our door, or the game does not start until 7:30, so we are encouraging people to go eat their fish at the Fish Fry and then come down and have a music bingo with us.
And where is it?
This will be at the fire hall. In addition to that, we also have a prom that is being hosted by the Mountain Dew Memorial Library, and that is set for May 6th, Saturday, and that will be down at the Legion. More information to come on that, but tickets will be $10 if you.
Awesome. Starts at seven.
Starts at seven. All right. Oh, memorial brick. We have money earmarked for a memorial brick to be purchased for a Swanson, Officer Swanson.
Russell Swanson, yes.
Not Russ Swanson.
No, no, Russell. He was, you know, a police officer here years ago. We had Lynette, I think, had talked to you, and the paper that she was given said it was $80, but you told her it was $100. So we just needed, that clarified so we can get this brick bought.
I think we, I think they increased, so that's why we took it up to $100.
Is this for the Heritage Park?
Yeah.
Yeah. The cost increased from 2007 when we first purchased them.
Right, yeah.
So the forms were incorrect, and we actually have to check right now with.
I'll have to check with them and see how much.
Okay, yeah. Just get us an updated, you know, form, and we'll get that filled out and get the money over to you guys, because we do have it earmarked for that.
How long does that usually take for a purchase? And I know it's post-COVID, so it might be completely different than it usually.
Been a while.
Okay.
Couple weeks.
Okay.
Couple weeks.
Good to. All right. Thank you for your time.
That is? All right. Anyone else have anything to address before council? We will close the public comment, move on to the business portion of the meeting. The mayor is currently absent, so the mayor's report is that she's not here. But I will take the opportunity at the top of the business meeting to let people know, we are currently streaming live on Facebook. This is something that we talked about in the last meeting and in the last couple meetings, is we're going to work on providing video of the meetings. It'll be streaming live on Facebook after the meeting is over. It'll be available, and we'll talk a little bit more about it later, but bear with us if you're having trouble hearing us or if there's any problems with the video. This is our first time doing this, and we're trying to work the kinks out, so hopefully we get a nice clean video this time, but I'm not going to make any guarantees up here. So like I said, we'll get to that a little bit later under, I believe, old business. So for the meantime, we will move on to the maintenance report.
I'd like to point out, as far as, I don't know if everybody's noticed, the pine tree's gone up there across from the school in front of, across from Pam's Valley. How nice that looks to see those being gone. Those four big pines, two of them, I'm surprised haven't come down prior to that, but thank you Barb for getting through the road. I know that can be a major pain, because I know when I was mayor.
Actually, it was very easy. I sent an email, and he directed it to the place it had to go. I just went online and got the maintenance. Who does their maintenance of
I would like to make a comment in relation to this maintenance report. Obviously, it's snowing right now. The guys are going to be back out there doing their best to keep the roads clean, and I just want to remind everyone that it is our responsibility as citizens to do our part to help with that effort, especially those of us along the Highway 6 corridor. We have our sidewalks. There is an ordinance that says we have to keep those clean, a clear passageway, and not just for the ordinance. These are our friends, neighbors, families, going to the post office, going to the bank. We shouldn't be making it harder for them, making them have to trench through snow, possibly slip and fall and hurt themselves. So I just hope everyone remembers, it's been an odd winter. We haven't had to do this as much, but you know, it's here, we're doing it, and let's all do our part to make sure that our sidewalks are clean, our roads are clean. I know the guys are working hard, so let's help them out and all do our part. That's all I just wanted to make that comment.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting.
All right. Motion by Chris, seconded by Tom to accept the maintenance report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll move on to the Borough Manager Report. Barb?
I got ahold of Ian M. M. Mary. They called Friday. I have to return his call. They'd like to come up and walk the area we're interested in. If you guys are still interested in doing that, they're more than happy to work with us again. Had to guarantee them that the problem that happened last time with a certain person wouldn't happen again. Jason and I spoke to Tracy Frampton about getting help with the, from the Eats Group to do the next grant for the Pocket Park. He told us that he would charge $750. When we discussed it with Erin Worley, she, she was very adamant that she really thought a lot of Tracy and how well he does with the grants, and we just kind of got a feeling that maybe if he was involved in it, we might have a better chance, and.
And, this is the same grant that Barb and I already applied for previously. Now, the forms weren't quite right, but we did our best effort. We did not get that grant. It does cost a little bit to apply for these grants, and so the thought that we had with this, and the reason we're bringing it before council to discuss paying the $750 to hire someone, is it's not so much, it, it's obviously not a guarantee, but we feel like it dramatically increases our chances of getting that grant. So then it's, in that regard, if we get the grant, it's an investment toward that as opposed to just taking a gamble on funds. And I feel confident, and I think Barb feels confident, that we would have a better shot of being successful with this grant submission with his assistance than without, because we've already been down that road.
And this will be the last grant we're able to use, the $120,000 for our match.
Yeah. So if we utilize Tracy Frampton's services, where would that $750 be appropriate?
I would recommend taking it out of the ARPA fund. We have some money there right now and taking it out there because since it is for recreation.
And we also have the donation from the Coalition for $540, which would cover almost all the 200 of it, 210.
And when I, when I do my report for the ARPA by the end of April, that project is already in there, because that's what we decided that the designing and all that would go from.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we appropriate and hire this grant writer to Tracy Frampton. All right, there's a motion by Chuck on the floor.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Brett. Any further discussion? Kelly, did you have input before we vote?
I just think it would be awesome if this money went towards that, because then we could definitely show the people that showed up for Music on Six that every dollar does count. If that, if you guys get the grants and stuff, that would be awesome, and that would probably help so much if they helped.
All right. Motion by Chuck, seconded by Brett to retain Tracy's services. Yes.
What you're saying is, we're not going to put out the whole $750.
We're going to be putting, well, the $540 is coming in. It's earmarked for the amphitheater, so that would go towards.
So we're only taking a couple hundred out of it?
We're taking out about $210.
All right.
All right. Motion by Chuck, seconded by Brett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Okay, if you guys want to rent the Street Sweeper again this year, you probably should get a decision in, because we checked with another.
Rick and Ann.
Yeah, they charged $4,500 for a week.
They charge more.
Yeah. I haven't got, I called this other one, but she hasn't got back to me yet. But they're scheduled out, the other place is scheduled out till June, so you might want to, might want to decide if you want to do it. We did, we did budget $3,500 for it. That's entirely up to you guys, if you want to wait and see, because they have to do the lines still on, on Main Street, right?
That would be the contractor.
Right, so they're going to have to sweep that anyway, so I don't know, you know, I don't know whether you guys want to wait.
They worked really good doing the side streets, and we partnered with Hamlin last year for $750. If it's $3,500 or under, I would make a motion to the effect that we do it. Reach out to Hamlin, we have them open there. If it's over, then we can bring it up next meeting. This is earlier than we've ever tried to schedule it before. We got it done last year. Decent amount of time, only a month.
All right, I'll second it. Rest my motion. Tom second to look into getting the Street Sweeper and talk to township about sharing the cost and service again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm still working with the person on Anderson Street and Todd Fantaski for their sewage issue under their house. I sent a letter to a resident on Gallup Avenue that had tore the street up doing, redoing their sewer line, and have given them until May 15th to get it repaired. If not, we're going to contract it, and the bill will be sent to him. I've discussed it with him. He realizes that's how it's going to be. The property on 14 Division Street is still not released after the fire. I talked to him last week. He said that they had had their hearing or deposition, and they're waiting for a decision from the insurance company or the fire marshal. I'm not really sure. He did, he won't come right out and say that he's been investigated, but that's what the owner actually has.
Should we be reaching out to the fire marshal and asking for the official status report from them?
Very least them or the insurance company.
I have no idea whose insurance company it is. There's no way for me. If he doesn't give me that information, there's no way.
Fire marshal, I would say. I'd have to agree with Chuck, because I've had several people ask me about it, and I know what he said.
He said, now, even like, he was renting, renting to.
Rent to own.
Rent to own it. I've already talked to the person who actually is on the deed, and she said as soon as it's released, they have a contractor ready to take it down.
Sounds like Kapanos?
Yeah.
Okay. If we can get something official from them or from this fire marshal, I'd feel better about it, because I do have quite a few people asking.
12 Division Street, they have given, been given permission to start cleaning up their, their lot. I know she told me they took a dumpster of garbage that was piled up out back underneath the rug, and they're cleaning the inside out, so they've started theirs. And there was, I reached out to one over. They've left furniture in front of their house that's been taken care of, and then parking issues and sidewalk.
Barb, with that, 12 Division, the one that caught off the other one, we need to probably keep once the snow goes, or maybe talk to the lady that owns it, the people.
To get that filled in.
And get that filled in out front. It's been too many years of being neglected.
Yeah, well, it should have been, yeah, it should have been done quite a while ago. Yeah, I will.
All right. I don't think there's anything more actionable. Did you have anything else?
No, that's all I have.
You know, means we're talking about those properties on Division. Should we be looking at our ordinances and see if something should be done, like some other towns did? You purchase a house, it gets inspected. It has to meet certain criteria before it's sold or before it's moved into actual certificate of occupancy?
I mean.
Because that fire from what I heard, now, I don't know, I wasn't there. There were explosions and whatever, propane tanks used to heat the house. I don't know if any of that's true. Maybe somebody has a little more knowledge on it, but just for, if not the town's safety, the fireman's safety.
Well, I would recommend decent idea to look into it and bring something actionable to council.
Well, that would be great and all, but that's kind of like why we have a lurch.
Kind of like, you know, do a little research and see.
I did do a little research.
All right, well, bring something actionable to council.
So what is the process by which we would get that on the books?
You would actually have to write up an ordinance for that certificate. You would actually have to have the people set up to do the inspections. Like, when I bought houses in Jersey, you had the firemen come. They would check out your fire and all that. They had an electrical contractor. They had a heating contractor. All those people came in and gave the okay.
And who pays for all of that?
The actual homeowner. It's not, it should not be a borough expense.
So you're going to increase their property when they buy, buy at least $3,000 then probably? Does that cheap, that inspectors come in?
No, it's not cheap, but after what happened, it's kind of.
Well, I was just wondering if that's kind of what we were thinking.
My thought is, if we could have a committee meeting and actually have everything laid out instead of, this is how it used to be. Here it is, and here's what other municipalities do, and here's a sample ordinance that we can look at. That's how the business meetings get.
I'll send it through email. I have it.
Well, no, have a meeting.
No, I do think we should hash it out in the meeting. I think that's a good use of our.
Doesn't need to be at the business.
Our work sessions.
Okay.
And then we can finalize exactly what it is that we want to put on people, what that cost is going to look like for them, that we would think is reasonable, what the cost would be for us to implement this and make it happen, just the whole process from start to finish, and we can take the time to hash that out.
Can I say something? Bradford City, that's how they do theirs.
Yes.
You can go through, they have a regular inspector that you can't move into a house and apartment that's for rent or for sale or anything until they've gone in and checked and everything.
Right, but they might have an inspector on staff.
They do.
They do. They do.
And that's what I'm talking about as far as expenses goes. We do not have those positions here.
Right.
Those would have to be contracted out through approval. It's, there's a lot of details that would have to be worked out to logistically implement something like this. I'm open to having that discussion and looking at it, but, but I agree with Brett.
Homeowners in Bradford have to pay for the inspector to commit.
What?
The homeowners in Bradford have to pay.
Yes, everybody does.
For the inspector to commit.
To implement it, to make it law here.
Right.
That process.
Right.
And then understanding what the process would be for them, so we can explain it to them. So yeah, I'd say schedule it for a work session whenever you're ready, and we already have those on the calendar for two weeks after this.
I don't know, so two weeks after this?
And, and we'll, we'll get together and we'll talk it out, see what we come up with.
What time do we want to?
I don't know what the work sessions were scheduled for.
You do the stuff.
I don't remember.
They were on a Sunday, third Sunday of the month, 1:00.
At 2:00 or something, wasn't it?
I thought it was 1:00.
I have it written down, but.
I'd have to look at.
Whatever it is, it's in the minutes. We'll find it.
Send an email, request it.
And we'll schedule it, and then we'll go from there. All right, do you have any?
That can have to be advertised, it means they're going to.
The work session's already been advertised, and we're not going to make any decisions.
No, we can't make decisions. All right.
So we're good. Are there any more on this?
No.
Motion to accept the maintenance report? Did we already have that?
No.
Yeah, I think we did, I don't.
The manager's report, no.
I'll make a motion.
Chris makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Brett seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Take a moment to look over the minutes. If there are no changes, they can be considered approved as they stand. Any comments on the minutes? All right, move on to the Treasuries Report and Payment of Bills.
I'll make a motion.
I have a question. This is about last month.
Correct.
Would, do you pay to unemployment?
Yep.
For lawyers?
Yes. She filed against us. We have to pay it. We have submitted it for reimbursement through our coverage. We have to pay it out until such time as they decide.
So you're not fighting it?
You can't fight it. It was already given to her before we were notified.
We were only notified after the fact that she had.
She mostly had an employer afterwards, so you can't fight it.
No, on a different, on the same party.
It just came back to us, because she has not been employed with them as long, so it's going to go back to the previous employer.
So you're saying she works someplace else?
Well, that's what we, that's what we think. We weren't given anything to fill out, and normally that you would be if it was just us.
I would caution that if we're going to continue this conversation in detail.
Right.
No, I don't plan on going there.
We can't go into any further detail, but that's where we're at.
We have, we, we paid the solvency fee. They've put in for us to be reimbursed, but he said it would take a while, because it goes through the state, so.
That'll go around on that.
Oh, okay.
As soon as we do hear back, we will let council know.
I'd also mention that these things come out about a week ahead of time. If you have questions like that, send an email.
All right, I already have a motion on the floor from Brett to accept the Treasuries Report Payment of Bills, seconded by Chris. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the Committee Report, Maintenance of Streets and Buildings.
Brett, do you want to run up the stories down the, down the east here?
Yeah. All right. So we have an issue on US Route 6 in the area of the Assembly Church and the East End Pump Station for the sewer system. There is a storm sewer drain that connects the north side of Route 6 to the south side of Route 6. Being that this storm sewer is in the curbed area of a borough, it is considered borough infrastructure. The state pushed this unfunded mandate on municipalities years ago on specifically burrows, not townships, just burrows, from what I understand. It's approximately a 20-inch sanitary, or storm sewer line. It's steel. I've had the state there, at least the night foreman, they have no information as to the date that it was installed, but it's galvanized. It's resting out. The borough guys pulled the storm drain to the south side. We went in, we took pictures. The seam is folded up, approximately 200,000 gallons of water a day are running underneath Route 6, and it's getting into the storms, or the sanitary sewer, which is a sewer issue, and we are currently in contact with contractors to get it replaced, or at least bored under to get a new sewer line so that the water is no longer going into our pump station, which at times is overflowing, and we contact DEP about when we have heavy flow. The other problem is, it appears that Pendant isn't going to do anything about this. Now, there's 16 inches of concrete and eight inches of blacktop on Route 6 in that area, and if that amount of water is going underneath the roads, I'm assuming there's a void there, because that amount of water's going to move an incredible amount of soil. So I plan to tomorrow contact the state representatives and the state senators in regards to this. Wouldn't particularly have a problem if we actually got liquid fuel money for state routes, being this infrastructure is under the roads. And we've had success in the past when I've called for storm drains to be replaced, where the state would come in, do the work, and send us a bill or work something out in good faith with us and get it taken care of, because there's, what they've stated in the past was, the top belongs to us, but everything below belongs to you. Well, the top's collapsing, my bottom, so you need to fix yours, because it's collapsed. What I'm very afraid of is about to turn into the next Palestine, Ohio. We have a lot of gasoline tankers, a lot of propane tankers going through town. I don't know if it's a hole the size of this water bottle or a hole the size of this room underneath Route 6. We don't know. And just to bore the sewer line underneath Route 6 without digging it up and set some manholes, go under 200 feet, the bid that we got today, or the quote we got today, because it's an emergency situation, was, and I haven't got it in email, but the gentleman called me and said $47,000. So if we trenched Route 6 across, even redo that, that 20-inch pipe is probably going to be five grand. So not only the storm drains and blocking the water and traffic control and all that comes into it when you get in with the state. So I'm hoping that a little pressure from this municipality and possibly PSDB, because they do have a committee that I sat on at one point in time that sends boroughs' concerns to a lobbyist that we all pay for, to Harrisburg, which is unfortunate, but if we get a group like that involved and a couple other municipalities are doing the same thing, maybe we can catch some traction. So I'm really hopeful that we get something done. At this point in time, mainly for the sewer, get that, the bleed stopped, and then. mainly for the sewer, get that, uh, the bleed stopped, and then come up with a plan. There's no sinking, there's no sagging, there's no indication of any wrong, but kind of the sense would tell you that probably is. And the unfortunate part is, we're probably a hundred feet from the uncurved area that Pendott will take care of, so.
There's a bill in front of the legislature right now to repeal that.
Well, that's correct.
Marty Cazor sent that today in an email.
Somebody must have said something to him, because I haven't talked to him yet.
It's to repeal that, that the boroughs are responsible for what's underneath the road.
We can't be the only ones running.
Well, that's the point I gave you, it's not a problem, but I did talk to a gentleman from Pendott the other day, and I told him my plan on getting all the state routes, because this is ridiculous. But they gave us liquid fuel, that'd be great, but they don't.
I, I, I'm not sure what other municipalities, I know Counter Sport had a big can of worms here a year or two ago, and they were up here, but correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been having a lot of trouble for many, many years on East Main Street with that pump station, and, and they have put, it's, it's been like a, it's been a money pit.
Couple of thousand dollars.
We put a lot of money in that, and it's been, and it's still, it can't alleviate it, so this problem that we're having now is, is probably what has been precipitating this all along, am I right?
I'm, the way I look at it right now, with the pumps not shutting off, two hundred one thousand gallons of water, and I used to run the water system in Jewett, a hundred thousand gallons a day from all the way to Lance Corners. After they fixed the leak, it was fifty, so I'm assuming the area of town that drank somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand, may, maybe, so let's say fifty thousand is coming from homes, a hundred fifty is coming from that pipe. It, it's.
We need to get to the bottom of it, literally and figuratively, whatever it is, because that, that's been an annoying problem, and, and they put an awful lot of money in that pump station, and, and, and it still can't handle the, the volume. Whatever it takes, I guess.
Yeah, that's, that's the main can of worms right now, secondary, um, to bring this up. Talked with Barbara, talked with Rick, um, we've had some issues with the twenty twenty gasoline engine F five fifty. Right now, we are in the process of getting information as far as possibly divesting that, that truck, and replacing it with a diesel, barring the trade-in values and things of that nature. If we can get sixty, sixty-five, seventy thousand dollars out of that truck and flip it out of here, it's a good truck, it's just not built for our needs. Small financing for this for two years, and then flip our blue truck, which the way we've been doing things for the past eighteen years is, we get one under payment, as soon as that one's ready to be paid off, we get another one. Um, this red truck, we've had more problems with, I'd rather divest of that, wait two years, or even another year, see what the financing due is. These trucks are about a hundred thousand dollars now, when we started buying trucks, we bought that road F five fifty, I wanna say it was fifty-nine grand, uh, that was back in oh five, so try and get it in a window that's manageable, a thousand dollar a month payments. But, uh, once we get all the information, I'll be bringing that to council.
Well, speaking of that truck, just so, you're all here, I'll let you know, um, they had to order a new, um, antifreeze tank for it.
Red one?
Uh, yeah. The little place where the hose pick plugs in, it snapped off.
I missed that today.
Yeah, they, they took me out before I left, before they left to show me it. They ordered it, it's about two hundred bucks, they ordered it from.
So you're gonna make it through the storm tonight?
Yes, but tomorrow morning, it'll be at, um, Zook's, and I told them if they were busy cleaning up, and they couldn't get over, that I would run over and get it for them, so.
I gotta go to K and two's.
Oh, okay. Alright, just thought I'd let you know as long as you were talking about it.
Alright, uh, anything additional on streets and buildings? Alright, moving on to finance and insurance, I'll wait till Chris is coughing to move to her side. She's all choked up.
I am all choked up.
This is your moment.
I know, and I don't wanna, but, um, Barb was kind enough to give me a little bit of a budget update, to see where we were at, so we could decide where we wanted to pull the money out for the sidewalk project, and for the project for the AIDS group. Um, I just wanna reiterate that we still need to kind of run, keep our bills kind of tight, and our spending kind of tight to the best. And other than that, that's about all I have tonight.
Those ARCA funds at four thousand dollars in there, has, is that after we've received all of the, uh, ARCA funds we're going to get? We've spent everything other than four thousand?
We need to put the forty-four thousand.
Yeah, remember we took that.
We borrowed, what about the county, a lot, does that command?
You spend it, and then they give it to you. There's a form you have to fill out after you've spent it, and then you send, they'll send you the money.
Okay.
Twenty thousand for recreation and.
Thirty-eight or something.
Thirty-eight, yeah, thirty-eight something for light.
Place to pull from the money that we need for designing things, a little bit.
That's fine, yeah.
Especially the twenty thousand, that's all we can import. It is parks related stuff, okay, is that it, Chris, you have anything else?
That's all.
Alright, we'll move on to personnel.
I, I reached out to the employees last week, I heard nothing back, so I'm assuming that everything is okay, Barb, do you have any, any comments?
Nope, everything's good.
Brett told me today that he got trimsy, that he said everything's.
Well, I passed him on the street, if there had been anything important, they probably would have flagged me down, so.
Or thrown something. Or thrown something, maybe.
Maybe, depends on how, how.
They were working pretty hard on busting up that ice.
Yes, they were.
Yeah, they were.
Oh, that's something, okay, oh, go ahead, you can bring it up.
I told him today, cause they, you know, working their butts off of trying to get that taken care of, that if they have to, like, they're after, you know, they use so many hours on overtime plumbing the streets, he felt he didn't wanna stay any longer and take care of that. And I told him, if they're willing to stay longer, I don't, my personal self, and I'm head of streets, I told him I don't think there should be an issue to use the overtime to get it off there, when it's the most simplest to do it, I mean.
That's what I told him too.
It's much more efficient.
They were worried about, they were worried about people saying something about them had been up here cleaning the sidewalks and getting paid overtime for it. Cause they said they could have come up like Sunday morning and cleaned it all up, and, you know.
Well, now the people see how they spend about five hours chopping ice.
Right.
Right, and it would have.
Instead of what, two hours of overtime?
Right.
Mr. Robin, did you have something?
Yeah, I do. Um, it's regarding the maintenance guys. Um, I wasn't here last month, but I saw them do something, and they were asked to do something that was normally not something that they would do. They went out of their way, above and beyond, and I sat back and watched this. They never frowned, they never complained or anything, so those people who think that maintenance, the maintenance crew will not go above and beyond what they're expected, they will. And they're a bunch of good guys, they really are, and it's, it's.
Well, we definitely have a really good crew right now.
Yeah, we do.
Um, our entire team, Barb included, it, it's a fantastic group that keeps us running, I'm gonna include Barb, cause she's part of the team.
Thank you, thank you. Somebody's gotta put the whip on those boys.
It's an important job. Alright, um, is that it, Chuck? Yeah, personnel, that's it, we'll move on to community development planning and parks, Frank?
I don't know. Well, I guess we'll set up a meeting sometime this month. I have two people that are showing interest.
Can anybody tell you, anybody these people are?
Oh, Ed Fisher and Sean, um, Young, I think.
Sky Ogden.
Yeah, well, Sean and Young is moving, so.
I can't remember who.
I didn't know, he just expressed interest back when we started talking about this.
Oh, somebody did email, let me see if I can find it real quick. Lisa Leschner is interested. Um, so, and then I've talked to other people who've said, uh, maybe so.
Where would we have a meeting? Would we have it here at the borough?
Um, we can have it at the library, um, there's room there, um, we could have it here.
I'm just asking, because.
Do we wanna set the park, do we wanna approve the park members before we have the meetings and everything, so that they can go ahead and set their meetings in? Do we have to approve the park members like we do for the other boards that we have?
Um, and I guess that's something we can discuss, because.
We could probably discuss that at the first meeting.
Well, but we discussed it here, because my take on this right now is, um, this is just my opinion. This advisory committee has no authority of any kind.
No.
Right now, they are just advising us.
Right.
With their ideas and pitches and bringing things like that, so I don't know that it, it's necessary for us to have any direct oversight as to who is a part of that body at this point. Because I wanna leave that open to anybody who's interested.
Right.
Now, if that were to change and evolve, and we were to give them any sort of authority, we would have to change that structure.
Okay.
That's my.
They start raising funds and set up a committee like they had years ago, where they had a couple thousand dollars, they raised it, they fundraised, and spent it.
I think they even had a budget from us, at one point.
A lot, and, and if we're gonna do that, then I would advise.
Yeah.
We set it up, we have it, so that it's kind of like the banner committee, where it's under the borough, it's running for us, the checks have got here, so that it's audited. Um, but if we're gonna allow people to spend their money without us, then we should be a great committee.
Correct.
Marilyn, are you thinking about getting on the park committee?
Oh, yeah, who knows that?
No, I wasn't sure, I didn't hear you.
We haven't heard anybody.
Big Lynette also has expressed.
Several members from, uh.
Yeah, we have, we have several members from the coalition that.
I forget, did Linda say something?
Mothers and boosters, bad at names, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either, she, she had voiced, you know, some interest in it, but I know, um, you know, my thoughts on this
um, are, you know, you have members of the borough, members of the Rotary, members from the Coalition, sports boosters. You know, and, and have, you know, input from.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Right.
Then we would come back to you guys and say, hey, you know, these are our ideas, what do you think?
As long as it's structured like that, and that's what. Let them, let them govern themselves. Um, but that, that could change it as time passes. Uh, did you have anything additional, Frank?
Well, considering, no.
Alright. Alright, we will move on to the fire department. Fire department did not have a quorum, so they just kind of planned for gun bash and discussed things in an informal way. So nothing, uh, actionable happened there. Um, the library, I think, was pretty well covered. Are there any issues at the library the borough needs to be aware of, building or the snow, or is all that going? Oh, I have one thing to bring up, I guess I could bring it up to Barb, but I'll just bring it up real quick. Um, when our guys are doing the sidewalk, they're probably gonna need to go all the way to Casey's driveway on that side, cause technically that's borough property. Um, at least to the edge of his driveway, just so it's up.
Good.
But other than that, I don't have anything on the library. I think Brett covered the main sewer related issue. Um, that's pretty much what's going on there. Um, Madam Mayor's not here, I, I'm unaware of an update on the township sewer committee, or, do you have, anybody have one?
I would just like to say we've kind of done our preliminary work right now, we're still, like I said, going through the preliminaries. It's not looking like we wanna take it over, but there's nothing said in stone yet, but we are still definitely looking into it, but right now it's preliminary, um, preliminary, I think it's gonna be a no, we're taking it over, unless we find out other information.
Okay.
That's just the preliminary.
No, I, I appreciate that update. Alright, if nobody has anything else on committees, we'll move on to old business. We've talked about the bike racks many, many times. Have they had any on that? Onto the record, video meetings, um, we have got this set up, so the way this is working, we are recording now. When this is done, we will be able to download this video, for the purpose of open record, we will have it on file here at the borough if anyone needs to see it. We additionally have set up a YouTube page for the borough, and the video will be uploaded to the YouTube page, so that if anybody's looking for it out in the public, they can easily find it and access it. It will still be on the Facebook page, but it's much harder to find things, cause they tend to get lost on Facebook. So we're gonna have it available in a lot of different ways for anybody who wants to see it, and we are going to be retaining it in compliance with all open record laws.
I'd advise it, or suggest recommend that we send this out to the news outlets as well, especially for this first run. Hey, here's our meetings, here's where you, here's where you can find them, if you can't send the correspondent.
We'll take a look at it.
First one here.
If, if the video, uh, turns out okay, um, I would be interested in Barb, uh, acquiring like a tripod or something, so we can, right now we've set it up, but if we could just have something stable so that it can be positioned wherever, and it's the same every time, it, they're not very expensive, but just, you know, once we're kind of like what, what Teresa has right now for hers, so it's a nice, stable foundation. Shout out Teresa. Alright, moving on to the funds for designs for next phase for the sidewalks, we did talk about that briefly. Um, you said they should come from the ARCA funds, was a recommendation, we also talked about the twenty thousand designated to parks, so as a council, what do we think?
No, the sidewalks, I think we should take it from our, um.
Oh, sorry.
From the CDs.
I don't wanna speak for you.
No, that's okay.
Did we have any, anything close to an estimate on what the engineering on that would be?
I don't, I don't, I know the last time it was two thousand dollars, but I'm sure it's gonna be more than that now.
Probably.
Right now, we have, um, the capital improvement account, we've got fifteen thousand dollars. And in our general fund through Pliget, we have twenty-two thousand dollars, and we have our CDs that we have some money, I think there's some money market in that too, that we could use, but I think we gotta take it either on one of those three accounts, because I think that's something majorly important, we should do is finish those sidewalks.
Oh, I agree, I, I don't think we should stop or run, especially on that end over there.
I would recommend the, uh, capital improvements right now.
Okay.
And, you know, cause that's what they're for.
Right.
We don't know what we're going to owe for the remainder of this sidewalk project.
True.
And then we can use either the Pliget account, or borrow against our CDs, not a banana, just taking it.
If we borrow again, yeah, we do need to have a repayment plan in place.
But right now for twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred bucks, it's, it's there. We're not in a hook, and then at least we'll know what we have here, maybe we decide, look at it, see what we wanna pay ourselves back, zero interest off our CDs or a loan, but I just don't wanna see them ever go away.
No, I don't understand that.
And yeah, I, I mean, at any time as we would decide to take from a CD, we should come up with a repayment plan and immediately adopt it. Either if there's a delay before we restart.
Yeah, we're gonna wait a year, that's fine, but.
As long as it's on the books and we're locked in, and we're at least promising to do it. Um, so, do we wanna put that in the form of a motion?
Sure, but we don't have a price yet.
We don't? We can wait. We don't, we're not in a rush, we'll wait, okay. Anybody have anything additional under old business?
I can just put a cap on it.
Cap on what?
Just so hurry, it, the grant doesn't open till May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, as long as we get an estimate, we can all park it from there, it may, cause it may have dramatically gone up, just like.
Well, and, and he said he has a lot from when we did it before, cause remember when we first did it, we were gonna do, try all of it.
When it opens, how, how long do you have to?
Till, um, the end of July, at least.
Okay.
No, it's gonna look pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional on old business? We'll move on to new business. This is probably new for a lot of you, this is something, um, borough manager office space, the, what this is, is, uh, we're in a, a shared space here. The, uh, the sewer authority has a closed office for them to conduct business, and they can discuss, uh, they can even talk about people's names, whatever it is, um, in private, because they have a door and walls in an office. Barb does not have that luxury, she is kind of out in the open, so, um, I would propose um, that we come up with some way, and I'm not sure what that is, to afford her privacy as needed, or if I come in and we have something we have to talk about, that maybe involves a specific citizen, and we don't wanna be doing it where anyone can walk in. Um, right now, if, if she has to talk privately, she has to huddle over the phone and talk quietly, and hope no one hears it, and it's just, I don't think that's an ideal situation, or altogether necessary, that she has to work that way, or any of the rest of us who might have something private borough business to discuss.
Even if she has to use the borough energy, you gotta pull an employee in and talk to them.
Exactly.
In that nature. Tom, you think you could give us a rough idea what something like that might cost, how we could do it, I'm not asking you to give an official bid, just tell us over.
Sorry, what, um, what area are you going with, so?
Yeah, maybe you give us an idea of this would work, and this is what we could expect, but nothing that would affect the bidding, I mean, just.
And when I talked to Barbara, she's even open to the idea of her, her space moving back to, uh, more code enforcement.
You can throw me wherever you want, I don't care.
So we can kind of rearrange the room as well, if that somehow helps with design and layout.
She can always come and visit this side and close the door.
She can, but, but.
I understand about her need, I, yeah.
And right now, she can actually go in the garage, and it's just.
Yes.
I just feel, and, and if it's something that we don't think is, is something we can do right now, that's fine. I just brought it up, because I, I think it would be beneficial.
I like the idea, but I'm just trying to figure out where it fits in our fiscal plan and what it's gonna cost.
Yes, that's the whole thing.
If it's ten grand, if it's five thousand, and where we're at, so we know, and maybe it's something that we wanted for next year.
Maybe we, we slide it under old business, under bike racks, and we just look at it for two years.
Well, you just need the bike racks out there.
No, they're not here yet.
They're not here.
Sorry, Chris.
What about like the, like a cubicle type of wall, for not to see that would work before you invest a lot of money?
No, that would stop the, shut the voice.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a comment here, that's probably gonna go over like a lead balloon. Part, the biggest problem is, is the door doesn't stay closed, it should be closed, and should, it does not need to be opened into rented office space. If that door were closed only unless.
If that door were closed, only unless that individual needs to come in and use the restroom facility. I'm more in favor of also, the main door was was a long time ago, was deemed that that was supposed to be locked. That public access wasn't, we weren't supposed to just, anybody, well, it was more of a safety concern for the employees.
There's more issues.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you you have your chance for rebuttal here in a minute, okay? Alright, I I'm more in line to say that that people still have en- entry into the foyer. And a, and a, another door be placed into the rented office space, and that would be their access, and the only reason that anybody would have to come into. This office space is if that person in that rented space needed to use the restroom. And 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 keep, keep our area more sequestered, you're talking about putting up walls and spaces and define. Keep the darn door closed in the first place, because that's that's how it was supposed to be set up. The business is being discussed, we shouldn't have to come into this room or go into the truck room or go outside to discuss borough business. For fear that somebody in our rented office space can hear us, and that's what this is all boiling down to, so let's just get it out in the open.
It's not just that, Chuck.
That's what triggered it, that's what precipitated it.
This is a public office.
Yes, it is.
If we have meetings with the park committee or with whomever during the day, a sewer offices, the sewer committee's having their meeting in this room. We need a sequestered office where you come have somebody in there, have a conversation, whether it's. The maintenance supervisor and the borough manager talking about employees' performance, or what have you. Personnel sitting down and talking to the borough manager about her performance, where it's an area that it can be closed off, the boys have their garage, the sewer has theirs, we have. She has hers, and then that way, if we use this office for the public function, like the luncheon, if if. Checks, illegal financial paperwork are on the table, you can lock it, and it's done, and Barb has her area, she has hers. We have our meeting, the sewer has their meeting, the borough, Rick has his desk, he can lock that and manipulate these doors. Everybody has their area for which to do business, it's not just one issue, it's it's everything. Uh, so I I think it's more than that, and even locking that door, that's fine, but if we allow people in and we're having a committee meeting. And then we have a sensitive borough matter that comes up, she, she, Jason, whoever should be able to go into that room. And not have to worry about, well, I'll call you back because we have plenty people in here for some sort of meeting, you know what I mean? It it can be dealt with in a private setting, office space. I don't care if we blow this door out, cause I don't think we need private. We used to have the water office in here, put a vault in, put this in, and make this one meeting room, we leave that the office space. You can do what you need to do, and I think this room could stand to be bigger and and have that dedicated office spaces, this dedicated council chambers and sewer chambers, but. Let let's give everybody their private space, not just the sewer, but Barb and and anything, so that business can be displaced as it needs to be. Cause if you're having a privileged conversation with the attorney, and we have a park committee meeting here, that's troublesome.
We don't lock that door no more.
No.
I didn't know where we're supposed to.
Yeah, cause it's banning it.
I didn't know where we were supposed to. We didn't before I left and I did.
We had for a while, because of.
We did it before I left.
Yes.
And I wasn't told to when I came back, so I didn't, I didn't know we were supposed to.
Yes.
Well, how about this, are are we willing to explore, um, options for how to create such a space? Maybe, Tom, if you would be willing to ballpark, kinda look at it, ballpark some numbers at us.
So we have some idea. Ballpark some options, either court, take what used to be the ordinance office area, or. If you put her over, if you put Barb's office over there, she's gonna be totally without our 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 natural light. I don't know, but if 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 you, if you keep it over in the area where she is now, at least she'll.
Well, she's, he's also got the window there.
That's at least she'll have natural light, but at least look at some options for, including putting another door into the rented space in the foyer.
Maybe we at least have some numbers to think about as far as, can we fund this, how much would this cost?
And I think we kinda, kinda gotta go about this the right way too, cause you don't wanna hurt feelings.
I gotta work with everybody in the knowledge.
That's fine, but you know where I'm coming, you don't wanna say, we're gonna go in, we're gonna do this, this, and this, and get them the impression that we don't trust them.
No, and I.
You really gotta be.
I do, there are certain things that just don't need to fall on anybody's ears, but.
But I, but I.
Either that, even papers just sitting on the desk, you know? Cause like right now, my desk, anybody can go on it and.
The other thing that needs to be seriously looked at is this building's been here since the sixties, the guys were in the basement, some of the beams. Not in the greatest shape, we got electrical issues, there's some conduits, this might be a figure, hey, a five-year plan on. This building kinda needs some upgrades, you know, if you stand out there, you walk here, go on the other side by the bathroom door. And look where that map drawer is, and look at the bow in the floor. I mean, there's, there might be some stuff going on here that we might wanna go. Maybe we need to think about doing some restoration as a whole to to this area, getting it. But we we look at it over X amount of years, like, okay, we like to have this office space, but we get in, go down to basement, look at those beams, go. God, this rounded out, maybe, maybe we need to tear this down, move her to this side for a while and 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 add the sewer office. Do something temporary here, got that side, yeah, but let's, let's look at it as a whole, because. This building doesn't get a lot of love and attention, we put floors in, we put a roof on, we put a furnace in, and. You know, we just take this one for granted, we've done a lot at the library with new HVAC and flooring and bathrooms and things. This building.
So are are we comfortable with our our guys and us doing the building assessment?
Yeah, I mean, if they get with Tommy, he's, nobody else in town would be cool with that. He knows what he's doing, just look at it, let's, in the real world, what what do we need?
So, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good idea, then we have, like you said, a five-year plan, frame it out however financially is responsible. And and so that's part of it, but then the overall thing is making sure we're a safe building, and it's best designed for how we currently use it. Cause it has changed over the years, how this building has been used.
This was water office, that was a cop shop, that was a borough.
So we're just making do with what we have, and there's probably a more efficient way to use this space. Alright, anybody else have any more on that discussion? Alright, last thing here, I put on here, options to promote Trail and Park of the Year Mount Jewett, I've been talking to all the organizations about it, I don't know what these options are. But this is a, a landmark opportunity for Mount Jewett, uh, the people on our trail club have done an incredible feat. In in accomplishing the Trail of the Year designation at the exact same time that the Kensington Bridge Park has Park of the Year designation for the state. Uh, these are incredible honors and may never come again, and the fact that they're coinciding right here, and we are the gateway to all of that. Um, we should take advantage of that as a tourism type of draw, as an investment type of draw. Um, I have talked to, uh, the coalition and Rotary about maybe trying to do some sort of, uh, and Barb. Uh, some sort of business-based luncheon to try and draw in people to to talk about the potential of our community as a place to open a business. And and look to the future of of, you know, obviously we're up and coming in some ways, this trail's coming together, it's being recognized, the park. Is doing better than ever, it's being recognized, and and we're right here in the heart of it, and we need to get our, I'm willing to get in front of anybody and talk about it. You know, the future is bright here, and and I don't know how we do it, I I talked to the trail club about T-shirts. Um, just saying that that they've accomplished that you're Trail of the Year, you know, just to promote that. I don't know, if we put a frigging banner on six or something, I mean, we should be ridiculously touting this achievement as a town, I'm not saying the borough has to do all or any of this. But as a community, we should be thrilled about this, and and we should take advantage of the momentum it gives us to. To do everything we can to to bolster and and build up the community and the town.
We should be contacting the PSAB and see if they would do some type of a profile in the magazine and ask them what they have. In in terms of, uh, uh, promotion, promotion from the, from the PSAB standpoint. Everything is, is, it, and I don't know, I don't have the answer to this, is how how we can trigger some, uh, major investment. From speculators or people who who are willing to, I mean, there's a lot of great ideas, there's a lot of great opportunities available for the right investors. There's gotta be some way to market towards investors who would be looking, committed and say, you know. You you've got B and Bs, and you know, this would be a great place for X type of business.
Right.
Yeah, there's got to be, um.
That's what I wanted to brainstorm.
People that, people that that we can look to, that try to promote that for cities and towns our size. Uh, perhaps a PSAB might be some somewhere to start with this.
Well, Chuck, to that point, um, you said marketing, maybe there's a marketing firm, we talked to them, maybe the borough lays out some money directly to marketing. Mount Jewett and the available properties, get it out there, that'd be like, small town. Uh, building's just gutted, but you might be able to buy it for ten grand.
I will say, on the marketing side, the trail club was reached out to by, um, the visitor centers at all of the state borders. And they're going to be putting promotional cards for the trail at every visitor center as people come into the state.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, you see them all over, they have everything, you know, you you need to state lines, and they've got every, every tourist trap in the state has a little slot.
They do work, yes, they do.
Maybe there's a trade magazine or invest something, get something into it, we put a little money out, a little money, maybe we'll get somebody interested.
Yeah, I I I just want us to kinda keep marinating on that, ideas like this, bring them forth. Um, if if anybody thinks of any contacts, magazines, whatever it is, um, I really think this is a huge opportunity for us. So we need to, we need to constantly be aware of of how can we capitalize on this for our community. That's all I have on it. In fact, unless anybody else has has anything, that's all I have for the business portion of our meeting.
That goes for the chair.
Well, before we do that.
Oh, this is not the business.
Uh, we do have the public response actually, did you have something, Frank? Hmm, did you have something? I thought I heard you say so.
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay, uh, public response to what we discussed in this meeting, yes, ma'am?
Um, definitely the best of the best, when they connect the Kane Trail to us, that, and we discussed this last month, this is going to be a big boom. Um, Jason and myself have gone to other business owners that have businesses in other towns, and their biggest concern right now is, do you have workers? And that is a big concern, not just kids, and that's before they'll even step foot here, they know, and I can't magically.
I got people.
I I don't know, but that's the biggest concern, um, if anybody knows Costa's Hardware, um, the owners or anything. I feel that our, uh, convenience store now changed to a grocery store, could be half hardware, half deli, you know, like grocery store and.
I already tried to.
Yeah.
Good work.
Yeah, I, I, you you can always make another approach to other entities, uh, you say you talked to Costa's one time?
I did, somewhere else.
Well, and I, and I spoke with, uh, Paulie and Bradford.
They what?
No, no, the.
Hor Smith.
Hor Smith, Hor Smith, and they actually did, they actually came in and and looked at it, and the the numbers weren't very substantiated. But that doesn't mean it's not worth revisiting, you you gotta try somewhere, you know, I mean, Dollar General was supposed to come in, was supposed to be here in town. And we see where it went.
Dollar Tree.
No.
No, Dollar General.
Dollar General was.
I don't know, it might have been they wanted.
I know, it might have been both of them, but Dollar General.
People that contacted me were Dollar Tree.
If you plant a Dollar General bag, that's where they grow, so.
I got a bunch of them.
Let's do that.
Any, anything else from the public for a public response? Hey, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Brett, Chris, I'm first, second, all is in favor.
Chuck, we are here in a meeting.
We stand in. Yes.